Encourage alternative forms of transportation and discourage the single occupant vehicle. The Missoula Valley and its airshed and aquifer are finite, they cannot absorb the impacts of unending development as we have been doing it without serious degradation of our quality of life. Performance standard-based land use regulations, infill development where public infrastructure already exists, cluster development that preserves open space for recreation and wildlife habitat, and sensitive mixed-use development that can minimize traffic are some growth management tools that Missoula will need in order to preserve our quality of life in the face of development pressures.
What would be your approach to encouraging public participation in city government?
I think Missoula is very lucky to have a body of citizens that wants to be active in political life and has a history of being active in political life. I think unfortunately, Missoula also has a history of citizens feeling like they aren't welcomed or they aren't heard once they do become involved in the process. And I have heard all too many times folks say, "I'm not going to get involved with that anymore. We've done that before. We worked on it for months or years and nothing happened." I think the best thing that the city council can do is to make a strong public statement, institutionalizing in the political life of this city that public participation is not only good, but something that we want to have as a regular part of how we do political business in this, in our community. I'm not going to read it, but I have on my written comments an example of how the city council could do that. It's a resolution of commitment to citizen participation. And I just humbly submit that to you simply as an example of, actually, this is a model on how it has been done in other places.
John, we've had an additional question just this evening to ask people for their party affiliation, recognizing that when people do run for office, they are given that opportunity should they wish to run as a candidate from a particular political party. Would you indicate your party affiliation, please?
Sure. I have paid membership dues to the New Party. For the longest time, I considered myself completely independent. I was one of the many who had been disaffected by how our two-party system has worked in this country. When I read literature that came from the National New Party office, I was taken by how the political process as it was professed by this organization did not begin and end around elections, but it had to do with educating people, organizing people, empowering people to become active and effective members in especially the local political process. And this is something that I think is very healthy in the civic life of the community, and this is why I support what the New Party stands for.
In addition to Monday evening meetings, city council meets in the mid-morning until late afternoons on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, plus some other activities. You would be expected to be active on at least two of those committees. The average time spent is between 15 to 20 hours per week. Do you have the time and flexibility to make this commitment? And what is your schedule like weekdays, late afternoons, and evenings?
Joining the city council or running for a position on the city council was something that I've thought about doing for a long time. But I knew the time was never right until now, both from a family standpoint and a job standpoint. When Mike Craig first told me, or first announced that she was going to be resigning, I broached the subject with Linda, my wife, expecting her to say, "What? Are you crazy?" A lot of other people have said that to me, but she didn't. And she said, "No, I think that would be great." My kids are now of an age, they're 19, 16, and 13, where they do not require as much of my time. My job, while it is a full-time job and sometimes more than that, it is not one that requires me to be there at rigid punch-the-clock type hours. The director of Missoula Childhouse Theater, Jim Karen, is very supportive of my doing this. And he basically says, "You know what your job is. You get it done when you, you know, when there's work for you to do, get it done, and you can schedule your own hours." I am very confident that I can make my schedule work around this. I did mention in here that we have staff meetings on Tuesday from 10:00 a.m. until 1:00, not that whole time. And I have been told that there aren't committee meetings in that period of time. Is that correct?
Pretty much.
That is correct. Okay. So, as far as evenings and that sort of thing goes, it's, I don't really have a schedule as such. Right now, I am involved in, in fact, I'm taking time off from rehearsing for Will Rogers' Follies. But I did let Jim know when I auditioned for that, that if I am appointed for sure Wednesday nights, I'm sorry, Monday nights, I would not be there, and that's fine with him.
The way the process works now, Mr. Torma, is on Monday evening nominations will be made from the folks that we've interviewed. And if you need a majority vote of the council members in attendance in order to be selected, if after two rounds of voting, no one has reached a majority, it is opened up for more nominations from the people that we've interviewed. And I guess we keep voting until we reach a majority for someone. Thanks.
I would like to submit this to the council. I refer to it on this handout.
I think everything will be in the packets that we're getting from all these people. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
What is that, John?
Okay. I refer to that on this third sheet. What it is, is 158 signatures of people who supported my application for this, filling this vacancy. Folks from basically all over the city, and all six wards, primarily Ward Three.
Thank you. Thanks.
Marty, do you need that?
Uh, thank you. You have extra copies. I'd love to have them because that way I can...
So, any place here where there's a microphone, John sat in front of this one so he didn't have to hold the button down all the time. We even left questions. Well, so you can take a few minutes to look at those, and we'll tell you about the process. All set. We're all set. This is Mr. Ted Hess Holmeyer. Pretty good, huh?
Yeah.
And we've allowed for 20 minutes for each interview, and we'll take turns asking you the questions as we go down the list. You can go into as much detail as you feel you need to, keeping in mind that we've got 20 minutes. And we've added another question that isn't on the list, has to do with party affiliation, and we'll be asking that between the seventh and the eighth one. If that, we'll call it number seven and a half, I guess. I'm Craig Sweet from Ward Six.
I'm Linda Tracy, elected from Ward Two.
I'm Chris D'Elia, the other Ward Three representative.
And Mike Bennett from Ward One.
And I'll start the questions. Why do you wish to serve on the city council? And what skills, talents, knowledge, or interests would you be bringing to the council?
Well, I've been living in Missoula since 1975, so I've spent virtually my entire adult life here. Actually, I guess for four years, I was in Arlene commuting to work in Missoula. And so, I feel the same urge, I think, that most responsible adults do, to put something back into the community. In life, you sort of tend to get things out of things that you put into them. I feel like I owe the city something. This is a very special city. It's a lot different than any other place I've been. I suppose when I finished high school, I could have settled anyplace. And I came here and was pretty much immediately really, really happy here. It's a paradise, I think. And that concerns me because the city is changing. It seems to be growing quickly. The population density is up. The traffic is changing. From reading the Missoulian, I think you'd have to conclude that there's either more crime already, or people are concerned that there is going to be more crime. And so, I'm a little concerned about losing those things that I settled here for, that I liked so much. The second part of the question was about skills and talents, knowledge and interests. I think my education is an asset. I have a J.D., that's the degree you get in Missoula, at least, to become an attorney. I think that's somewhat advantageous, although I think that in a lot of cases, common sense and basic street smarts can do much the same thing. But I think it would help in some specific areas. Reading and understanding the concepts underlying ordinances, I think it would help me there. Being able to understand the city attorneys and legal issues well, I think it would help in that way. As long as I'm talking about being an attorney, I thought I should talk about my skill and style as an attorney. Some attorneys are very contentious, some are very good at working things out, some are good at both, some are balanced. My skill tends to be on the side of working things out. I'm not as much of a litigator as I am who, a person who likes to settle differing, conflicting interests. The other, in terms of skills and talents, I have experience managing and developing my own firm, my own business, which was far more challenging than I ever thought it would be. And I also have a family, and that's, in a lot of ways, the same in the sense that there's a whole bunch of very different skills that I've had to master to do that. And the other thing I think I bring to the job is I have a substantial, the most substantial investment I'll make in my life, I would think, in the ward, that being our home. And that certainly ties me to the interests of the ward.
What is the role of the city councilperson? Please speak specifically to the relationship between governing and managing, representation and leadership.
I tend to think of a city councilperson as being a representative, I think, more than a leader. I guess that's sort of a confusing philosophical question of democracy, because in some ways, I think the leaders in a democracy are probably the most, sort of the most enslaved people, the most harangued people, because you're trying to keep so many different people happy and be sensitive to so many different people's wants. And so, I think my style would be, would tend towards being a representative. That partially comes from my lawyering background also. I sometimes represent things that I don't much care for. And I guess if you philosophically disagreed with something that your ward wanted, you'd be responsible to understand and be empathic and try to represent those things. And then, the question also used the word managing. I have kind of a peculiar like. I like spreadsheets, balance sheets, and that interests me. The city budget interests me. I like looking at a spreadsheet over a period of time and finding out why things get more expensive or less expensive. And I think that would be a strong interest of mine on the city council, the budgeting process. That's it.
Okay. Briefly describe Ward Three and include information about its boundaries and neighborhoods.
Well, I went to the, when I applied for the job, I went to Dan's office, and they have a big map in there with an L-line on it. I drew the ward. And I guess I've always known this, but, you know, you don't start really thinking about something until you look at it. One thing that continues to surprise me is the division between the university and the university area. And I don't, historically, I don't know why that happened that way. I really don't know how wards, you know, who draws these lines and how they develop. But that seemed odd to me, and I've been thinking about it ever since. And frankly, I haven't come to any great conclusions, other than that's difficult. And I know it's sort of causing some difficulties now because there's two different interests. You know, when you live in the university area, you think of the university areas, including the university. There's also a difference, maybe a mild economic difference, between the streets across Higgins from the, they call it the diagonal street district. And so, that's a different, has a different type of neighborhood. That's all.
What do you consider to be the most important challenges facing Missoula municipal government during the next two years?
Well, I think it would be how to manage growth without losing the features that make Missoula special. And I just briefly sat down and wrote a list of the features that I think make Missoula special. And it's kind of interesting, was interesting to me when I went over them. Cost of living, it used to be that Missoula was a very inexpensive place to live, and we've already lost that one. We lost that really fast. It sort of happened without any of us noticing, I think. All of a sudden, rents, housing was twice what it was before. The beautiful environment, we haven't lost that yet. Economic freedom from massive corrupt bureaucracies. I grew up in a large city, and if you were a builder or a business person, corruption was just part of your existence. And I've occasionally represented people that had come to Missoula to build from east coast cities, and you ask them, I've asked them, "Is this something that you have to be involved in here?" And they always say, "No, there's no buying permits here." And that's important. It doesn't seem important to people, maybe, that haven't grown up in a large city. But if you grew up in a large city where the older persons are indicted sometimes and serve jail time, and then run for reelection successfully, it's something that people like me treasure, being in a town where that doesn't happen. Low crime. I think everybody sort of expects that to start changing. Clean water. I followed the stories in the Missoulian very carefully about the aquifer, and I like to talk with Peter Nielsen a lot about that. That's a big concern, and it wasn't a concern when I first came here. We were taking the water out of Rattlesnake Creek. And I think we all had the sense, even though it was the mid-'70s, that somehow the water was sort of boundless. And when you, I guess the understanding is now that we have a limited, finite aquifer, and so that's a big concern. The lack of gridlock. I'm starting to, sometimes I'll be driving around Missoula and have to sit in my car behind another car, and that never used to happen. And that's a concern, and that's the kind of thing that can stymie economic development in a city. Open space. Preserving prosperity when things turn around. I think that's going to be a theme as the city grows. And that's something people don't think about right now because the employment, the unemployment rate's pretty low, and it's a lot more prosperous than it was when I came here. Sometimes I wonder, well, are things going to turn around? If so, how will the city cope with that? Preventing the flight of capital to outlying neighborhoods and deterioration of central neighborhoods, that's a big concern in my ward. A lot of the people in the university area now can afford to buy or build a big fancy house in one of the valleys around Missoula. And I hear people saying things like, you know, "Well, what happens if the neighborhood deteriorates?" And so, that's a concern. And that's it.
How would you prioritize using city resources relative to the needs and wants of Missoula?
Well, I tried sort of listing what I think are the most important concerns. It's kind of a difficult question. But if I prioritize the, what I think are, would be my concerns, if I had to arrange the concerns of the city, I think I'd place clean environment for the health reasons. Clean environment, air and water first. And see, that's different than, say, an aesthetic environment. After that, I guess some, preserving a low crime rate. Some words, I tend to place health and safety first. After that, prosperity. And then, I, after, I consider those to be the most important issues. And then, I start worrying about things like traffic management and environmental aesthetics.
What are your thoughts about growth management in the Missoula area?
Well, I guess, I've touched on it a couple times. It's, to me, it's the major concern facing Missoula now. I'm a little bit more concerned about it because, and one of the reasons I applied, is because I get the feeling like there's actually more apathy now when the city's changing rapidly than maybe there was in the mid-'70s when I came here. I think the mid-'70s were a more politically exciting time or something, and more people were getting involved. Although, when I applied, less people had put in applications for this job. I am more impressed with the applicant pool. There's, I'm pretty pleased with the people that have applied. The major concern facing Missoula now is growth, and I'd like, the way I'd like to handle that, I guess philosophically, if I get this job, would be to isolate five or 10 themes of what I think is special about Missoula, and then try to manage growth so that we protect those themes. And my biggest concern while managing growth is I think that sometimes when we govern ourselves, we do one part of a two-step analysis. When we regulate growth, I think we have to ask if the goal is acceptable to us, if we have a consensus as to what the goal is for the regulation, regulating scheme. But then, there's a second question, and that's, will the regulation accomplish its goal effectively? And the second question is a more cynical question. You know, the first question's like, is it a nice goal? The second question is, is it a good goal? Is it a workable goal? And that's what you get into when you start managing growth, because you're balancing a lot of different interests. You're balancing, for instance, when you try to regulate, when the city and the county try to regulate for open space in the outlying areas, you've got the interests of the developers and the private property owners, and you've got the interests of the people that want open space.
We have about five minutes. What would be your approach to encouraging public participation in city government?
I think more time spent doing outreach in the ward, visiting people, talking to people, calling people, writing to people. As I said before, I think there's, it's, my perception is that there's more apathy than there was when I came here before. It seems like in city government, particularly in our ward, there are some real central loud voices. And I think that's good. I think that people speak out, and that's good. But there's also people that aren't involved in those groups. I hear university homeowners, people in my neighborhood, saying that they want specific things. But then, I hear other people that live in the ward that aren't university homeowners saying that the University Homeowners Association is an elite group. And so, there's two groups involved there. And I think you tend to hear from one group more than the other if you don't sort of get out and talk to a lot of different people, try to be sensitive to different desires.
We've added that additional question that Craig mentioned earlier to ask the applicants, each applicant, for his or her political affiliation, recognizing that if you were running for office, you'd be given the opportunity to indicate what your political affiliation was, if you had one to indicate.
I'm not a dues-paying member of a, one of the parties. However, philosophically, I consider myself a moderate Republican. I tend to be fiscally conservative, just because I'm kind of a tight one personally, and socially liberal.
In addition to Monday evening meetings, city council meets in the mid-morning until late afternoons on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, plus some other activities. You would be expected to be active on at least two of those committees. It's not really good. I've said that every time. It's never made sense when I said that. We're referring to our committees that meet in the afternoon, but we never did refer to the word committee before that sentence. The average time spent is between 15 to 20 hours per week. Do you have the time and flexibility to make this commitment? What is your schedule like weekdays, late afternoons, and evenings?
I own my own business, and I work part-time, and I have complete control over what cases I take, and how many cases I take. I would cut back some, particularly on the litigation for this job, for a couple of reasons. And I don't know how much litigation I want to be involved with in doing this job. And litigation tends to be very pressuring. Takes a lot of time.
You might be involved in litigation.
Yeah. Yeah. So, no, the scheduling isn't a problem.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate you coming in. The way our process works now is on Monday evening nominations will be taken from the various, from any, council member can nominate anyone that we have already interviewed. We've tried to reach, you have to reach a majority vote. If, after two rounds of balloting, none of those candidates that were nominated have a majority, then it is open to further nominations from the list. It could very well be that everyone gets nominated the first time, and it's a matter of people dropping out. I'm not sure how that'll work, but ultimately, it happens because I don't think we've ever failed to appoint someone. But, thank you.
If anybody has any further questions, I've got phone numbers in the book, and feel free to call me at home or at work.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Tracy?
Craig, I wish I had thought of this at the very beginning.
Now you bring it up.
Now I bring it up. I think it would have been helpful to have indicated to each of the people that we interviewed that this session would be broadcast on MCAT Saturday at 3:30, and I wonder if we could ask the clerk to make sure that each person is aware of that, and certainly applicants and council members. This has been a very educational evening. I'd also like to have us clarify with regard to especially the comment that our last applicant just made. It was a question that I'd had for a little while on my list here, which was, do, are we open to receiving additional information from the individuals who've applied? We should clarify that. I recognize that the public is limited at this point, but others may be tuning in on Saturday. Some of our public processes are closed at certain times, and some are not, and I think it'd be helpful to clarify that.
I'm not certain, but I, the only, other than the appointment of Mr. McGrath, I do remember when Donna Schaefer was appointed to fill out Will Wood's term that evening, I believe there was comment from citizens during the public comment time. Or, it could have been one of those instances where it came up at the very beginning of the agenda, and the public didn't get to comment, and that was a problem because they had historically commented. I remember there was some controversy at that time about how that was handled, because typically, you know, public can comment at our meeting about things on the agenda.
I'm sorry, I might not have been clear, and I think that we do have the commitment to, and both the legal responsibility, to permit public comment prior to our making our decision on Monday evening. I was more asking if the applicants could present additional information to us or call us. Mr. Bennett had... Mr. Bennett had indicated some other questions he was interested in personally finding out the answers to. Could other members of the public call us between now and Monday night to advocate for their preferences? Is there anything in our process that would prohibit that? And if so, we should not identify that?
Yes, okay. I don't know, I don't have a good answer for you on that, and I can check with Mr. Nugent first thing in the morning. In fact, I can email him when I get home tonight, so he'll respond early in the morning. And then we can, I can have the city clerk get the information out to the council members on how they should handle information coming and going from candidates. Chris?
Yeah, I think that's the best way to go. I think that, you know, the process so far has been entirely open, and that's the way we started out, and it seems like that's the way we'll need to finish up, to be consistent. There may be, obviously, there are some differences of opinion about how that was approached, but I think we should be consistent with what we've done so far, and I would have no problem with that consistency, so. But I think it's a good idea to check it out with Jim, and let, have us all get telephone calls, probably, especially people who weren't here.
Okay, and I appreciate you three staying. I feel very comfortable with my decision. I think it was a proper decision to make. And I also, I want to say, I was very impressed with all the candidates. I think letting them have the questions, I think, was a benefit to us. I think it allowed them to give us a much more thoughtful response, and I really appreciate the time that many of you took to jot down answers. I think I looked and noticed that a lot of the candidates, who may not have had a stack of paper with them, had notes written next to the questions they had received to jog their memory, and I think that was very good to have that. Yes, Linda?
I just wanted to ask if our city clerk could research the issue that did come up earlier. The other council members who did not choose to stay here this evening had seemed to indicate that past practice was not to permit the applicants to be in the room while another applicant was being interviewed, and yet someone else had thought that that was not indeed the case in past practice, and I think that perhaps for clarity, we ought to indicate what that is, and so that we don't have that problem in the future.
I think that's fine. I don't know if I want to constantly repeat past practices.
I can tell you, I wasn't allowed in to be interviewed of the other people when I was in the situation.
Nor was I. But...
So that's the last?
Does not mean it was proper.
If you're looking for historical...
I think the main point is that we were given a decision at the beginning of the process, and whether we agreed with it or not, the process was researched, and it was just, I think, unfortunate that everybody hadn't gotten calls about that process, so that maybe they wouldn't have felt the way they did. Maybe they felt, they didn't expect it to go that way. I think that was what was happening. That's why some phone calls this weekend.
No doubt, no doubt, there'll be some on my machine when I get home. Thank you, and I guess we are adjourned.